I will open the meeting at seven oh one P M and this meeting is recorded. So if you don't like that, you can not participate. Uh, we're gonna root review and approve the minutes from June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, which seems like yesterday. Any comments? Otherwise, can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Right?
To approve the minutes.
A second?
A second. I wasn't at the meeting, but I think we've decided that's okay.
That's okay. Denise Nash was there.
Hey, accidentally put your name.
She weren't there. You just didn't know it. All right. All in favor? Hi. Okay. We have. Uh, if it's okay with everybody, if we could move up the resolution to fund rural aid to schools. Um, right now, is that okay with you, Shelly?
Of course.
Okay. All righty. Jessica, you're on.
Would you like me to introduce it tonight?
Yes.
All right. So, um, legislators for our district Natalie Blay and Joe Comerford are the sponsors of the Rural Schools Bill, which takes the recommendations from the Rural Schools Commission Report about what schools like ours need. It includes fully funding rural aid to sixty million dollars, lectures five point five million dollars. So it's a huge increase of towards what we need. Um, it includes strengthening the special education teacher pipeline. It includes full state reimbursement for out of district tuition and transportation. It includes a lot of things that will, um, actually help all districts, not just rural districts, because some of what we need is what all districts need. Um, we are still trying to get a hearing for that bill by the Joint Committee on Education. Um, Joe and Natalie have asked us to take a series of actions, including passing this resolution in order to keep pressure on the joint committee to schedule these hearings. Um, this bill was written for just for districts like ours and, um, this resolution was written, uh, the original template was written by Martha Fuber, who's a lawyer and the, um, chair of the Mohawk Regional School Committee. So I, I encourage you all to support the this resolution so that we can move forward the Rural Schools Bill.
Lots of good stuff in there. Uh, so we need a vote on this tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any questions about it? Have you all gotten to review it? Aware of it? Yeah. Uh, can I have a motion to support the resolution to fund rural aid to schools?
A motion, um, to support the resolution to fund rural aid to schools.
I second that motion.
All right. All in favor? Hi. It's unanimous. It would be great.
I'll send you a docu-sign to sign.
Great.
And then your names will be on it as well.
Awesome.
Thanks, everybody.
All right.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, and we'll skip back to our financial statement. Shelley did send us a.
I did, and I don't really have much to talk about. Um, I was.
I know. It is good.
But I said to Harrison, I'm like, it's so boring. I have nothing to talk about. Boring is okay with budget. Um, so thirty-three.
Boring is good. It's like Chaparral in the prom. Boring is good.
No, that means you're missing something that's going on, is what that means.
Okay, thirty-three warrants were signed, uh, in late June, July, August, and early September. That was to close up fiscal year twenty-three and pay bills as well as start up the new year. Uh, the warrant total is one hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-one cents. I did send you the choice and general fund expense accounts to look at. Um, Conway, as things stand right now salary-wise, you know, generally we have some personnel changes that affect the budget at each of the schools, but there's nothing going on here that is a dramatic change. There will be savings from the nurse leader line because that position is now part-time or stifened, actually. Um, so we'll see some salary savings there. Um, the other thing is, I know heating fuel, we were way over budget last year because our prices were down when we locked in the contract was significantly higher than the year before. Right now, rates are just shy of a dollar less than they were last year. So I have until the end of October to lock in. I'll probably try to do so sooner than later and hopefully we aren't as far over as we were and we'll, we'll find ways to make up those funds. So unless you have specific questions.
You lock in with one of those that if it drops, you get to pay the lower price or?
No, because our prices are typically lower anyway. So.
Yeah.
Just because we're part of the collaborative bid.
Yeah.
So we get to choose when we lock in and it changes daily.
Yeah.
Um, so I watch it and try to make the best decision I can.
Yeah.
Last year I held off and held off. I actually think I locked in on like October twenty-eighth because I just kept waiting to see if it was gonna. It didn't really change. So right now it's not, it's not terrible. It's more than we, two years ago, we locked in at like two fifteen a gallon. Right now it's like three twelve. Last year it was three ninety-one. So it's still a decent price, even if we did lock in today. So. Working on those things. Um, revolving fund, we're in decent shape with all of our revolving funds. School choice balances up. It's expected that even though we had quite a few students leave, um, whether it was sixth grade or families no longer here, Kristen did bring in enough students offset, so our revenue should maintain the same amount as prior years. Um, school lunch is free universally.
I know. We no longer have to talk about billing for school lunches. What, what controversy are we gonna have?
I know.
We're gonna have to stir something up. I mean, since I's good.
Boring is good. Exactly. Since I've been here, Conway has probably had the school lunch account that was in the most deficit. And now, you know, we have a hundred thousand dollars. We've been able to save over the last three years because we could supplement with other funding sources. So we did get a new range this, which is still having challenges, um, but we are looking at.
Is it working or being delivered?
Um, working.
Lighting the right spot?
Yeah. 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 A new one is on order. They're replacing the one that is not working. It's been a snafu from.
Must be hard to make a lunch.
Yeah.
It actually has been.
But we're still seeing, we're still making them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Genie, you know, Genie.
Yeah. Bringing the food truck.
Yeah.
So I tend to be conservative and like to save in case there's an emergency, but it's a lot of money to hold in school lunch. So we're looking at what other things need to be replaced, even if it's like small wares that we haven't replaced in a while. So we'll make use of those.
Cooler issue at one point. Wasn't the cooler or something, the freezer?
Yeah, that has been fixed. Yes.
Yeah.
Genie has her wish list, you know, that's kind of ongoing.
Yeah.
She's very conservative.
Yeah.
She asks for.
Right. Okay. Questions? Boring is good, huh?
Yeah.
Right. That's a great. Thank you. And Kristen sent us principals report, which was awesome. Um, I don't know if you all had a chance to review it and if you want to give us the highlights?
Oh, sure. Um, so I'll just give you the highlights. If you have any questions, let me know. So we have, we went from eighteen, uh, students to our school. I gave you a breakdown of, um, the number of students per grade level and whether they're, we had a nice number of new Conway students who moved there into Conway, which is always wonderful to see.
Cool.
As well as, um, a nice amount of school choice families, which we love to welcome to our school as well. So I gave you a breakdown there. So we have eighteen new students plus any of our new kindergarten nurses, um, who weren't here on pre-K and then, of course, seventeen in our pre-K program. So we're welcoming many new families, which is very exciting. Um, we have a total of a hundred forty-six students. We're back up again. That's just great. Um, again, I want to thank you for, um, supporting the summer program this year. Again, we had approximately thirty-two students involved with the program. Again, when I first started, we had two, got not to Deerfield, so we're thrilled with these numbers. The students do a lot of learning and a lot of fun. They almost don't realize that they're learning.
Okay, good.
I can imagine.
Sneak it in there.
We love their summer. Yeah.
Did you read?
So thank you for supporting it. I mean, it's, it's, it makes a huge impact and we have happy children there, which is wonderful. Uh, we're really working hard on data. Um, and we have all sorts of data points. We have recently finished our DIBELS data, which is, um, an indicator of reading and if it's where children are having difficulty, we'll say, you know, oral reading fluency or phonemic awareness, and we're able to really pinpoint and hone in on what we can need to work on with each child. We've had, we had a couple of data meetings already and we have a plan and we're ready to go. And, and we're collecting more data. Data will be doing immediately while, um, MCAS scores will be released eventually, but the school does have that data to work with. Um, so we're, we have a dynamic team, really. I mean, this is a team that is fantastic and all they want to do is get even better. So really a dream team. Really quickly, really excited. Uh, one of our parents wrote a grant, cultural council, Conway Council, um, to bring native artist and historian Jennifer Lee in for a two-day educational immersion on local native history and culture. She'll be here on October tenth and eleventh. She's bringing a wig lung. And each class will have forty-five minutes to go in and she's going to be telling stories and they're gonna be learning about her weaving the baskets. The wig lung will be set up at recess so students can peek in and, um, there's many resources. I added some links in case anyone's interested, which are great resources. We're gonna be giving to the teachers tomorrow to take a look at, um, so that they can pick and choose which ones they might want to, uh, share with the classroom. But we're really excited about this opportunity and we thank, thank the both of those places for the money to allow this to happen. Our peer mediation program is up and running again this year. Jill Barnes, Josiah Muddy, and Ashley Hannes will be leading the peer mediation program. I wrote down just, you know, you know this already, but the benefits of the peer mediation program. It's free. It's wonderful. Um, children learn conflict resolution skills, empowerment, improve relationships, reduces bullying and aggression, conflict prevention, lifelong skills, fostering a positive school environment, restorative justice in contact, contact relearning environment. So we're really proud of our mediation program here at Conway Dennis School. So that's the, put a print on our reports.
Is it each grade is involved or is it certain peer mediators through?
So, um, usually students from fifth and sixth grade are chosen.
Yeah.
And, um, each, the teachers sort of decide based on the culture of the classroom, whether it's children I voted on by their peers or there's recommendations. There's a whole interview process. The students get trained in peer mediation. I think they do about seven, six, six to eight hours of training. And then the older kids, the fifth, sixth graders. Last year we just had sixth graders, um, lead the peer mediation, which is really exciting for them.
Oh.
You know, when we have issues on the playground with little kids, okay, we're gonna set up a time for you to go to peer mediation. Do you, would you like to go to peer mediation? Would you like to go to peer mediation? And typically problems are resolved. You know, if it's not at the teacher level, obviously.
Right.
But yeah, it's a great little program. It's the way the world should be, right?
Totally. Hollywood Park School has a very robust restorative justice program that, you know, I've talked to the kids there. They, they're amazing. They're really articulate.
Yeah.
They solve a lot of world problems.
Yeah.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Kristen? All righty. Public comment? We have some public. Hi. Thanks for joining us. Any comment other than saying hello and participating in our meeting?
Good job.
Awesome. That's awesome. Okay. Great. Uh, unfinished business, superintendency agreement update.
Um, we were stoked to, I'm sorry, we wake up. Um, we met, um, the group met last week. So I threw this on the agenda because we're posting things. Um, we did not come up to the final piece document. Back to the attorney with more questions. Um, you know, it was good conversation. We're trying to be thorough. It's just taking longer. So hopefully at the next video, you'll be able to.
Okay. All right. And capital update.
Capital update.
Is that a new stove?
You gotta use stove. I'm gonna fire through this, but what I did is I, um, I shouldn't see up there. I did everybody's. So, um, I'm gonna go. Frontier got new boilers. Yay. It's through pictures. So if you get tired, you're leading all day long, now you get some picture books.
Bet you they were expensive.
Yes, they were, but we did pay within the school choice money. So it did not affect your town. Um, tennis courts were put in. Um, they should be actually finished next week. They're actually even further along with this picture that was taken last week.
With pickleball?
With pickleball courts.
Goodness.
I can see some intertown. You guys got pickleball courts? Or I see.
Well, we have our tennis courts that we turn into pickleball courts.
They're with the pickleball crew and they were, they were talking about the date that this would become available.
Oh, yeah.
Now I know.
They go town to town.
Yeah. Yes. Uh, they painted part of the gym. They painted the locker room floor. That's the boys' locker room. It's really gross. Um, they, we did a press box, uh, the top here. Um, it's actually done. It was done today. They ran out to the picture, if I thought of it. Um, Deerfield did some brush removal in the front of their buildings and plantings. They did eleven rooms of A C. They're trying to catch up to Conway. They got a new dishwasher. They had their floor refinished. Gym, very pretty. They got a new shed. How did we get that here?
Yeah.
Someone, someone just got A C in their library. They're just the beginning of the A C thing. They had to do some floor repairs that had some foundation issues. They're replacing their oil tank, which is underground and it's a big, big, big deal for them and currently we're in the process of looking over the bids. They came in yesterday. They had their phone system replaced and got caught up to what's up here. Um, they had the interior building painted. It's actually a hundred and ten hundred percent better. It was getting really worn and tired inside. Wheatley had the floors replaced, um, in their building so they can be easier cleaned. The tile wall is a better product, I could say out of the gate. Is harder to clean over time.
Yeah.
Um, they had a new sidewalk put in. Um, they had a safe schools sidewalk, but much like Conway, it just kind of goes through a street where there's no sidewalk, but we won't break that. They had a tree, a whole bunch of trees get struck by lightning. And so we have to take all those trees out, but that's gonna affect it budget-wise. But they painted their library and got new tables for the cafeteria. And I think they gave the cafeteria too. Conway, now I slow down. Look at that beauty.
That's nice.
There is a generator because Conway, out of all of our towns, needs a generator. That is our darn joy.
That's amazing.
Because you had, what, wind, rain.
Town in the northeast.
You guys are.
Twenty twenty-three. We're working on the T-shirt.
We have fire and brimstone coming next up here, so that generator's gonna help you out there. You had A C put in two classrooms. Um, we're gonna talk about that in a little bit later. You have two classrooms left, I believe. Kristen, am I correct? Two classrooms left to be done. So you're almost done with the entire building.
Splits. That's cool.
There's the new range.
Looks pretty.
Not really. You can see there's been some browning right here. That's because there was a fire right there because there was some huffing wrong. So, um, we are returning that and getting a new one.
It, it came wrong to begin with. It's uses propane or gas?
Yeah.
Gas and they, you just started and it came, and it came gas. So then we had to have a conversion kit put in and there was problems with the installation of that.
I mean, we should have a conversion kit. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it is a lot of back and forth. It has been stressful. In the kitchen and such.
So we're not using it at all right now?
We are using it.
Yeah, because it came repaired.
It's been worked on.
And we turn off, Bruce and Genie turn off the gas.
Um, Singer is the company which bought out Kittredge Equipment. Kittredge was a local company.
Yeah.
And they were bought out recently, which we buy the majority district-wide of our kitchen equipment from them. No one knows what happened.
Wow.
How, because we ordered the right one, the wrong one was delivered.
Yeah.
So they're sending us a new one. They've covered all the costs, so fixing so far.
Look at Genie. Make him.
Move it out there. You got a, it's a little French toast.
Yes, French toast. Yeah. Ended up baking it. The curtain.
The curtains there. Only Jared shoots an air ball and it goes in it and it's all way back out. Sure, but, uh, for a way too shiny. The floor is also shiny.
He gets it really good in the summer.
Be done too, right?
Polished, not redone.
Right.
Bruce doesn't, yeah, but to be redone like that, yeah. I put that on our wishlist.
If you go do it, like you show on tell, there's some tape marks where the tape was put down, pulled up.
Right.
There's flooring.
That's Bruce's. We're pretty careful. We'll put it on the wishlist.
Um, we had flooring done in the classroom as we continued and the office got new carpeting put in. So this is the nurse's office. That's a student that wasn't feeling well. And then you can see the flooring in the classrooms that were done.
Nice.
Yay. And then a pest-free storage container.
It's fabulous. Does that really exist?
Yeah. I won't go on for my backyard, but that, that's the smallest size.
So I don't think that'll work.
Have you, are you humidity issues?
Yes. Yes. You know, they, they did the carpet and then two days later. And Kenzie came in in the summer and she thought there was popcorn all over her floor. She's like, where'd I get this popcorn from? It was all mold.
Oh.
From the humidity. So they had to redo it. Yeah, we have a hard time with that.
We're talking about.
In, in the container was the.
Don't share that with our impression. My God.
Well, no, everyone has.
I'm sorry.
What do you keep in there?
I have no, oh, uh, uh. Desks, um, boxes and curriculum books.
Curriculum books. Yeah. I, I got flustered because I was talking about the carpets and I didn't know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Kristen just needs to be quiet.
Okay. Looks like a very tiny kids' storage container, but I can't believe it's pest-free.
I can't wait to see, like.
We're gonna put a big slice of cheese in there. We're gonna see. You guys, I've got to get you this much, fifth minute.
I was gonna say.
Okay, so not pretty, but the partitions are beautiful, huh?
Where's Phil? He would be so.
Oh, my goodness.
This is for Phil.
He would, except we need the flooring too.
I will say, when you see the flooring here and you saw the new flooring in Wheatley, you know, you two small towns are competing against one another. Who has the, uh? Um, so anyway, but that is the last.
Oh, we didn't do bathroom flooring. We did other flooring.
Yeah.
We, we, yeah, we do that.
Well, probably partitions first, that's what's good.
Yeah, those.
That is. That is it in pictures.
See what happens when you ask Kristen, you get. I know you've been trying to teach me that. I haven't.
That's awesome. Love it. Wonderful. Thank you.
The only other thing that was taken care of was that we did have tree damage from one of the storms this summer and it fell over the wellhead and some down there. And so they had a tree company come up because you had to keep your, there's rules about, uh, debris above the law. So they cut back and pushed that off and they cut, they cleaned up a tree down that was on the soccer field. So I didn't have pictures of that because I.
Yeah.
It was hot that day.
Those are moving now, do we know? Snow.
Well, they do.
And we get it through the town.
Okay.
The town.
Okay.
What we pay for. Yeah, yeah, they do. We didn't used to pay for it, right?
Correct.
Somebody figured out Dallas.
No, I think we pay some directly now, but I think that snow, that the town. Pays us that. I don't think Bill pays us that.
I agree. I think that.
But we didn't, we used to pay. I think the town used to do, just cover it or they did it themselves in the last couple of years.
Yeah. Well, they had the local guy. They had Tom Romelovich forever and then he sold his company and I hope they had it after him.
It's much more expensive now.
I mean, usually they're, they're expensive. All righty. We are on to new business and curriculum update.
All right.
Hello, welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Laura Ramsey, the curriculum director for the elementary schools and, um, I would love to update you. I think I could talk about this a lot longer than anyone else, so I just wanted to, you can like click to advance the slide and we actually want to. I'm gonna go back and include more things that I left out of my most recent presentation. Um, just trying to get the side right. Anyway, last year was my first year with the district and, um, I had thought that I would just take a year to get to know all the schools and the systems, but the teachers and the principals were very eager to get, um, a new ELA curriculum and a new math curriculum, um, for different reasons. But, um, coming out of the pandemic, I think that that's kind of what happened was that things, um, uh, we, we had a plethora of riches because there were, but we also went in multiple different directions. And now that we're not in that situation anymore, it would be great for our students and for our teachers if we had some core pieces in common so that we can collaborate, so that we can do PD together, so that students moving in the district can, um, have the benefit of a seamless transition curriculum-wise. So kids going into the middle school come together. And, um, also it's easier to use the data that Kristen mentioned when you're using it in multiple schools to assess curriculum. It's hard to assess curriculum in small schools if it's not consistent over time. So we formed two committees and the committees have people from teachers from every grade level from all four schools, special education teachers and specialists, and we did, um, research and the principals, um, made lots of time for the committees to meet, which was great because it's a lot of release time for two different committees for two or three hour meetings all year long. We researched the standards. We researched the curriculum that were out there. We visited schools. We wrote vision statements for our, um, whole district around ELA and math. And first we were able to, um, make selections around ELA. So, um, this year there's a full implementation of English Language Arts curriculum, K through six in all four schools. Um, and I will tell you about math as well because we did make a selection around math, but we're staggering the implementation so that, um, teachers aren't required to lift two programs at once in the same year. Um, some teachers are opting to use part of the math program or all of the math program. Um, but that's not a district requirement where we are doing a heavy lift around the English Language Arts. So, um, last school year, all of the classroom teachers got trained in the DIBELS screener that Kristen mentioned. The quick interviews to three times a year, um, notice if there's anybody who needs an intervention. Um, and then K through two, and in some cases grades three, uh, we're using UFLY, which stands for University of Florida Literacy Institute. We're using their, um, foundational skills program. So that means that there's a half hour in those classrooms every day that is, um, TPR, which stands for Total Physical Response. The students are, um, drawing that within the air. They're drawing on whiteboards. They are using manipulatives like magnetic letters. Um, and they're sometimes singing and it's a highly interactive and explicit and systematic instruction around, um, letters and sounds and phonemic awareness and, um, so that's how students are actually learning the mechanics of how to read and it comes with decodable texts, um, which means texts that students can read after a lesson that only include the sounds that they've been explicitly taught. So there's nothing on the paper that they can't sound out based on what they learned to that point in the year. I think the first decodable's come after eight lessons. And they can just begin to read very, very simple stories. Um, I could go on about that foundational skills program, but that's a half hour a day. And, um, followed by that is a half hour of differentiation, meaning that kids aren't all doing the same thing. So there's one way in which we're sure that nobody's, that there's no hole in anyone's education. We go through it in order, simple, positive. Everyone's had a quick instruction, but then in another half hour, students are reading books of choice. Teachers are meeting with kids as needs be, um, for projects, for fun, to review something, to preview something. And they're doing activities that are, um, related to the foundational skills instruction. And then in a separate hour of the day, um, students are, K through six, students are doing, um, EL Language Arts, which is the program we selected for their central literacy module. And, um, in all grades, there's four modules a year and each module has a focus topic. And within that topic, the, the arc of that is to build background knowledge, do personal research and then do a performance task at the end. So, um, let's see, there's, uh, one of the units in fourth grade is animal defense mechanisms. And so, um, students will read a lot about animal defense mechanisms and the teacher will just read alouds and they will, um, develop background knowledge and then they will all research animals, different defense mechanisms. I think they specialize on one animal in particular, but then the students can read about any animal. And finally, they write their own, choose your own adventure book about animal defenses. So whatever animals they study, they turn it into a fictionalized account and you can go this way if they use that defense mechanism. And that way, if you use another, and they do some, so that's sort of the arc of the, of the ELA. And the reading and writing are integrated. Um, that's a switch because we used to teach reading in one part of the day and then writing was totally separate, but now. in one part of the day and then writing was totally separate, but now there's reading and writing entwined in these project-based activities. And then um, the first part of the module is more reading and then the last part is more writing, but there's reading and writing around. And so all of the teachers in Conway are um, doing this and and across the district, but I'm just increasing appreciation for what teachers are doing this year because it's a lot to learn. It's um, the teaching manuals are this thick. They provide so much background information for teachers, um, techniques you might want to try or extensions you might want to try and um, I guess I could look at the teachers. Yes. You can affirm that it's a lot and um, it's exciting. I think there's a culture here of embracing the the work, the priorities of the program really fit with all of our districts and um, Conway. So I think teachers are on board, but um, it's a big investment.
It's really like a reorganization of teaching.
It's a real org- reorganization of teaching. That's a good way of putting it.
And I mean, I think going about it the right way, last year with the involvement of the teachers like on the panel, the support of the, you know, of the schools to give them the time to invest into it. I mean, that's gotta be paying dividends this year as you're trying to get buy-in into it, that it was their peers who came up, you know, that had their voice in it, so.
Yep. We have an, um, last year we had the selection committees and this year we have the implementation committee. So we have two teachers from every school helping to give feedback on what do we need in terms of training or time or what are the hardest things? And then when we have our Friday early releases this year, um, the classroom teachers are meeting across the district to talk about um, where they are in the in the program and what they, you know, we're going to start with something that's going well, just to keep the spirits high, but then we're going to workshop things together because the first year a lot of things are going to need to be workshopped and worked through. But everyone will be working on the same thing. So when teachers say, I find it really hard to find the um, the anchor charts, they could say, here's my solution, what I've been doing, and they can create shared folders together and with resources. And uh, I think people are looking forward to that, although this may be like not the right week to say how much teachers are looking forward to it because it's like three weeks into the year and we're finding out what's hard and the rhythm is going to come in January and February, according to the schools that we visited last year. Takes a couple of months to really get a rhythm with it. And just so the committee knows, um, the implementation science that says a few things that are good to know. One is that um, one is that the first year, you're really just trying it. You're not getting all of the dividends, to use your word. Um, and then the next year, you're doing it because you tried it and now you're doing it. And the third year, you own it. And then in the fourth year, you refine it. So it really will take four years until until it's in the in the air, you know, until it's not just something that's a little bit separate that we are doing, but it's actually how it all works. And um, the way that it improves um, looking through measuring data around test scores and ELA, it's not likely to increase um, at the same amount for the next four years. It's likely to not increase our test scores very much at first and then to have a a large leap at the third or fourth year. That's what that's what Sunday's Day happens is that it, I you you might think that every year it's going to get better and better until you're at capacity for that program. But actually, it's until you own it and refine it that you really see the difference. So so we are invested for a long time. This year is really hard, but it's gonna pay off over time.
What districts did you go see it implemented in?
We saw, um, trying to remember, we went to the with this program, uh, Shutsberry School, and then we went to Shelburne Falls School. And then we talked to somebody in um, I talked to some teachers, some some schools through my curriculum leadership committee that are farther away.
Yeah.
Like, um, I'm just I'm spacing out the name of the school where they do all the reenactments in the middle of the state. I want to say Shutsberry or Shelburne. What's it called?
Starkbridge.
Starkbridge, yeah, no.
Yeah, Starkbridge. Starkbridge.
Derby, yeah.
I was close. You were right. Sounds like.
A lot of it is um, meant to be experiential in the the ELA Language Arts piece, and so um, it really fits with their um, hands-on charter school, Starkbridge Village. I also want to mention that um, you know, when a teacher comes and they want, you know, certain professional development or certain um, ways that they think will be helpful in their teaching, I tried to never say no because, you know, it's pretty admirable when someone says it. Laura was very, very flexible. Um, this is the first time I can say that we did a project as a district and every one of the classroom teachers, reading specialists, specialized teachers, were able to be in the school entirely. Were able to be on either the reading committee or ELA committee or the math committee or the implementation committee or the um, trial, you know, the trial basis. I mean, always proud of this staff, but like to for all of them to take that on together, and Laura being flexible and allowing that to happen, went a long way with this staff here.
That's awesome. Yeah.
Let me also say, I'm not surprised that our staff accepted it and embracing the change and.
Yeah.
Surprise at all.
Yeah. How the kids received it. You know, I've been in quite a few classrooms of teachers who have started it and um, you know, for example, you you go into first grade, I'm saying that because Jennifer's right there. They are so engaged and so happy. Up to, you know, I'll give you another, like up to Maggie West's fifth grade, um, where the, where again, the students are so, you know, the I was falling away. I went into third grade, um, the background knowledge that the students get creates a level playing field for the students. So there's not an assumption that students know about this topic. The background information is given to them for, you know, three different ways. So when I watched the students answer the questions, I felt that for the first time in education, we have a level playing field right now in this one particular lesson because they all took their own information or kids who didn't have information got the information. And this discussion was so um, it involved so many kids that I know this sounds silly, you know, I try to, but it literally brought tears to my eyes because I felt like it was a very level playing field. Students who usually don't answer questions, they kind of quiet, they're answering questions with excitement, you know. And also, these teachers present in such an exciting way. It's really, I mean, you you know, it's all, it's a lot of it's about.
Fun topics.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it meets all types of learners.
Feeling really good about it.
For the kids who.
That was a priority, was making sure it was accessible and um, it is.
Yeah.
And the teachers are, um, there's a room in this program for teachers to be themselves. Um, you can speed up the delivery. You can slow it down. It's not, they offer scripts, but it's not a scripted program. They offer scripts because they've thought of everything and they want to make sure that there's a high quality program being offered. But there's um, if you use the learning targets and the texts and the anchor charts, there's a social emotional component that runs through the curriculum where they learn how to discuss disagreements around ideas and, but if you follow just the basics, teachers can bring them, bring yourselves to it like. Yeah, and it's a lot of work, but as Sarah was saying, she's making posters for the fifth grades and the upper grades, but she's laminating. So next year, guess what? Those posters are all going to be on. They're all going to be ready.
Right.
Yeah.
Ooh. Sounds great.
Yeah, and I can tell you about math too, if you'd like to know, but maybe we need to save that for another time or go.
Go ahead.
Okay. So um, it took a little longer.
Two math people here.
Oh, great, great. We took a little longer to make the math selection. The the committees just were on different schedules and um, and it actually worked out that we aren't doing two in one year. I mean, that would have been the decision anyway, but we didn't know which one we were going to decide to do first and just having the ELA decision get made sooner. Um, and we had grants to fund PD last year, so we started training teachers last year and ELA is the is the big lift this year. But we also had a grant for math and um, for new math materials. And so when we decided to use um, Bridges for grades K through five and illustrative math for grade six, we went ahead and um, surveyed teachers to see who would like to just have the materials this year to to try them out or to commit to one part of it. And um, and so we do have some teachers who have just elected to try the new math programs this year. So um, let's see, illustrative math is the sixth grade math because K fat, Bridges is only K five and um, fortunately, the middle school, our seventh and eighth grade use this as one of their resources. It's not their only resource, but it's one of their core resources. So when students move from our sixth grade to their seventh grade, there will be some familiarity with the routines. There's always a warm-up and an activity um, and a synthesis, and so they'll be familiar with with the rhythms of the math class.
There's routine in this. There's routine.
There's thinking routines. Um, so both Bridges and illustrative math, one of the nice things about these two programs being our elementary programs is that they have the very similar pedagogy. Um, it was really hard to choose between the two. And the reason why we chose Bridges for K five and not illustrative math, one of the main reasons is that they have something called Number Corner. And so I'll tell you about routines by talking about Number Corner. Um, Number Corner is a twenty-minute meeting every day. And there are five workouts that build fluency and algebraic thinking, and they pre-teach um, material to come. They reinforce vocabulary. One of the routines is called Calendar Math, and so um, every day you turn over um, from a from a pocket chart, the days of the month. Um, on the other side, there's an image. And at first, those students don't know what the pattern is, but you started on like the fourth day of the month. So when the students are in a group on the rug, um, you start trying them over. What do you notice? What do you see? What do you wonder? And then what's the pattern? And then students start to say what they think they see. And then students turn what they're noticing into equations. And so then there's a um, an anchor chart where volunteers come up and say, um, so I think in fourth grade right now, they're looking at these strange symbols. It turns out to be Egyptian math, Egyptian numbers that reflect the day of the month. So on day one, it says day one, day two. So the students start to figure out what the um, what the Egyptian hieroglyphics mean. And then they start to do equations to say um, to represent the patterns on the board. So that's one of the routines. Another routine is um, working on a number pathway. Like in third grade, they count by tens. They count backwards by tens. They another month, they'll count by twenties and then a time they'll count by twenty-fives and count backwards by twenty-five. So there's routines that build fluency and patterns. And that's what a number of teachers, I think every teacher at Conway is doing the Number Corner meetings this year, just electing to do that. Um, and then next year, the core program will have um, has two parts. One part is called Problems and Investigations, and that's presenting the class with a problem and um, students usually engage with the problem before synthesizing strategies that work to solve it. But one of the equity pieces in math is making sure that multiple ways of thinking mathematically are honored and that teachers don't say this is the best way or the one way. Um, students learn what's efficient. They learn what, how to recognize and they learn what's accurate. But they also learn some flexibility and they start to see relationships between different ways of solving problems. Um, I saw some kids working on one today where there was an irregular area and they had to decide if you could determine the area based on the irregular shape with partial measurements offered on the perimeter or not. And so they weren't even asked to figure out what the area it is, but do you have the information? And kids had lots of different strategies for arguing that you could or couldn't find the area of that shape. So that's the kind of big picture thing. And then it's synthesized and the strategies become posters so that there's a reference and there are solid places to look if if you want to check out a strategy or remind yourself of a strategy. And then the last part of the math period is called Workplaces, which is basically activities and games that reinforce the strategies and the number concepts, but um, it has a very serious tone to it because it's not called activities. It's called workplaces and they they go get a tray with the work. They get a partner if it's a two-person workplace or they get three people if it's a a triple workplace or sometimes there's a solo workplace and they they do the, they do the work, which is really a game.
So this doesn't sound at all like elementary school when I was. Pretty impressive. It's building critical thinking.
It is building critical thinking. That's great.
Problem solving.
Yeah. Yep, and seeing seeing mathematicians, seeing yourself as a mathematician in multiple different ways, recognizing your classmates' mathematical thinking. Um, so we do representational work. They do, um, they also find examples of generalizations, so they learn to make conjectures and find evidence and prove, and that's part of the language of this program. Thank you for sharing.
Yes, nobody clicked me, so. Yeah, my son got to go last year to a music studio to learn how music and math are related. Because his math teachers also has a music studio and it was like suddenly, I mean, he liked math anyway, but after that, it was like, this is super cool, you know, how how that is integrated, but.
Is it within the committee's protocols for me to ask Jennifer if she wants to add anything? Because I know she's using me as a classroom teacher, right?
Sure.
Did I miss anything? Or do you want to um, amend anything I said?
No, it's it ever, that sounded great to me.
Oh, you muted or we can't hear you. I think you muted, Jen.
How about now?
Oh, it's on our end. We can't hear you. There you go. Oh, there you are now. You're on.
Okay. Now? Okay, um, the only thing I'd like to add is I piloted um, some of Bridges last year. And it's the first year I ever had, I'd ever lost track of time and the first graders lost track of time. And we were seven minutes late for lunch. They were so enthralled with the math learning and the activities that we just were late and they didn't even care. I mean, that's how I phrase.
Aside. That's awesome.
Hey.
First graders care about lunch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Awesome. Any other questions? Thanks for coming this late hour and presenting that very interesting.
Oh, good.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, our last new business is heat pump reimbursement rebate. That's exciting.
Super exciting.
It's super exciting, but not super good news.
It's very disappointing, but we're living through it.
You want to do it?
No.
We don't get that from.
Correct.
Why? You're gonna do it?
I I gotta remember we're in a meeting here with people. Alright, so we get the rebate, right? So we, our planning was that we pay for these heat pumps. We get a rebate. We best that money directly back in.
Right.
Well, I do my best here, right? So it's like doing in front of the teacher here. Well, apparently, um, some accounting um, believes that it's a proper accounting, that the money has to go back to town. It can't go back to the school.
Because the town funded it for warrants. Even though the capital stabilization fund was used, we asked for the money from the town, so it has to return back to everybody.
Can't the town then gift it back to the school?
There, so there is a, in the accounting world, there is a difference of opinion and um, some would and some won't. And hearing both sides talk about it, they both say both sides are. No, one says that the more stricter side is the correct side that we should give it back. According to our auditors, like that's what should happen.
I consider going back to the town, but the town could give it back to our fund.
We could request.
We are going to request. We're going, well, I don't know what exactly how we're doing.
Back into the stabilization fund maybe, right?
Um, so they should, they should deposit it back to the stabilization fund, but in order for us to access it again, ask for another warrant, so we could go to we could go to the special town meeting or we could wait until next year. Currently, we we have to pay for it. Um, they were both already installed, right?
So we assumed we were getting it, went forward and had them installed, so now we have the bill.
So we paid for it with school choice funds. And either it's a wash and we just pay that as it is and we're out that money um, for.
How much money?
Fifteen.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. It's a second.
I was gonna say twenty. I think we should ask.
Pink, you were taking a couple grand. Um, so.
I mean, it's really just a process thing.
Correct. It's also so.
Process.
Right, right. So we'll.
It's a more complicated process than we had hoped for, but it still should be a process.
Right. And so I don't disagree. The the other factors that are going to be on the table, so would by the time the the winter tell me is usually what in in December? Have they had one in?
Yes, last year, remember, we didn't go on the frontier. Capital stabilization didn't happen.
Right. That can be a fun meeting, apparently, I heard. So but anyway, so we had some time to put together a deck of our, but we'd have to go back to the town desk to get the money.
Well, then the thing is.
Meanwhile, the town is, as you wrote the front page of the paper, was to say yesterday, you know, they're concerned that they're not going to get the P. And meanwhile, the town is, as you read the front page of the paper, was to say yesterday, you know, they're concerned that they're not going to get the P M. So they might be dead broke. And so it might be the year where we, you know, we're gonna have to have those conversations with account officials about. It may be proper, but it may also be the year where they're gonna say every ten thousand dollars is gonna mean something to us. What are we going to do? So we're gonna have to kind of feel that out. In a normal year, if it was three years ago, it's a, you know.
And I actually think, so two things. One is we are going to be looking at the capitalist and updating in the next month so that we can decide on projects for next year. It may be that something else is prioritized and we need that seventeen thousand for something else and, uh, the last two AC units.
Yeah.
And two. It may not go directly back to the stabilization fund. The town could deposit it to wherever their free cash holding is. And then at town meetings, if you remember in the past, there has to be a motion or a warrant article to. Move money from free cash back to the stabilization fund. So they technically have a right to, at this point.
To put it wherever they want.
Wherever they want, wherever they want. And we could ask them to move it back into our stabilization fund since that's where it was paid from to begin with. It was forty five thousand. It had to be paid upfront, so there was a conversation with the town accountant of. Well, you should have reduced the warrant request, but you can't because you have to pay in full.
Right.
You don't necessarily know what your rebate's gonna be and they can pull the rebate.
I remember you saying not knowing.
So we had to request the full forty five, the full forty five got paid from stabilization and then seven hundred and fifty five coming back, so.
The town.
You know, we're fort, yes, we're fortunate that we could still afford to do it because there's only two units left to do, so we're ahead of the game, but. Unfortunately.
Have you talked to Veronique about it yet? Have you asked her to, like, do we need to send a formal letter to ask her to deposit into the stabilization account?
So I sent a formal letter saying, just talking to. Was it the attorney or was that the?
I talked to my father.
We talked to an auditor.
Town's auditor.
Not the town auditor, but a different auditor and said. How can we do this? And he said, well, the select board can just transfer that in if you ask to request that. So I sent a letter to the select board on behalf of all of you, let me see if you guys. Um, that basically said, please, you know, this is what's going on, so on and so forth. There. Town can disagree.
Well, and he also called, um, D O R.
And he called D O R.
Who does excess and deficiencies certification and D O R. And the auditor that I talked to did say. Technically, this is how it should go. And.
Does everybody do it? Does everybody do it this way? No.
Because you're funding the same project. It's not, we didn't take the money to go do something else, so.
Right.
You know, I, I think.
When you read the warrant money, the warrant is. I disagree with it, but I'm not in accounting, so.
I think.
I looked at the, the, the warrant said we were used forty five thousand dollars to put in A C. I got it on sale and I buy an extra one, you know what I mean? Who is that? You know, basically, you know, is sale and rebate the same thing? Not according to accountants. So, but anyway, so it's, yeah, it's one of those things where they're gonna get audited, they want, they want this looks a certain way and they.
And accounting is ninety nine percent of the time black and white, like there's not a lot of gray in accounting.
They love gray administrators.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, just as I just said.
Right, and mental health clinics. Seems like there's a way to work it, but. Everybody has to work. Creatively with numbers. But anyway. Mostly, and I think the town will still get some funding from the disaster.
I assume they're not, but if they don't.
We're gonna sell a lot of T-shirts.
We're in what?
We're working on a T-shirt design to have, you know.
Sell a lot of T-shirts.
The wettest town in the northeast for July, twenty twenty three. Oh, yeah. Very interesting design call.
So all the work on one sixteen and that's state, right?
State, that's state. But they did work on, state did the work on Wateley Road for you to stick it up and running, I'm sure they're. Charging us. You know, I don't know what's going on with Husick, you know, Husick was like a cliff.
Yeah, it's still, well, my kids live on Husick, but it's still close on the one nine.
It is.
That's Deerfield.
Where the, where the cliff is?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure how far down it was, yeah.
My kids live on that line, Deerfield.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. I just never see that wasn't done. That wasn't born.
Saying so.
Okay.
Saying you.
Um, I do not have a report. Is there a collaborative report? I don't have a report, but I did send the executive, um. Director's report to all of you. And I think the most important thing in there is just that there is the member district's. Benefit brochure, so it does kind of just, it's an overview, sure, but it's like highlighting what the services are that they provide to their member districts, including us. So.
They still do a lot of trimming, huh?
Yeah. Um, and Darius already gave us lots of reports, so. And you sent us one too.
I gave you a superintendent report.
You did?
Um, I do just want to highlight a few things on it. We have a joint meeting on the twenty eighth, you can make that. You're in the equity audit, that's the only thing on the agenda. And. Is it six o'clock on the twenty eighth? And so.
We get an invite for that, right?
Yeah, I'll do a brief one too, as well. Um. And so I do ask you to bring your questions and comments regarding the audit, um, because it'd be good to have a conversation around. Rather than just a, um, straightforward presentation. We don't like boring around here.
No, we don't.
Um, I also might, um. Report you that we did receive rule eight. Um, and if, you know, they would be, they budgeted fifteen million and so we had twenty eight thousand. This year instead of the fourteen thousand we got last year, so it's a nice increase. Um, again, we're gonna have to have a conversation during budget season about whether or not, they did not put it inside chapter seventy, so. It's a, it's a, it's a loan, um. Funded thing from the state, so we don't know what they're gonna fund it next year. But at the same time, I know folks are gonna want us to be spending this to some level, looking at upsetting our budget.
Offside our heat pump.
We definitely, we definitely could spend it right on that if you wanted to. Um, and maybe, a- again, it's not, it's not a crazy idea there because, you know. But I did want to talk about, you know, chapter seventy came in and, um, we will be, um. They're thinking that sixty dollars per student. So we got, you know, three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So our budget last year went up by. At sixty thousand, right, at least? Went up by sixty thousand, the state's chapter seventy funding, which is their portion of your budget, went up by just about four grand. So there's a big, a lot of conversations happening and, and at the state level that we are not the only towns that are in this, what we call home harm. Old harmless area where because of our decrease enrollment, we only get the per people funding. Under, and this is Student Opportunity Act too. So when you talk about the Student Opportunity Act, it's gonna save all education. It really is just saving. Seeing where most students are, the big urban areas of the state, um, but it's really hurting. Districts that are all harmless. So there's actually, the M A S C just sounds like, say, I don't know if you've ever listened to it, but they are. Trying to pass legislation to examine this and to correct this. So, um, so, you know, so, um. The rule aid helps because you have the rule aid with the, you know, we, we make thirty two thousand dollars, so we make, you know, almost over a third of what our. Growth of our budget was last year is, is created with state, but one of them isn't guaranteed to come next year. Whereas we will continue to build off the chapter seventy. It continues to go up. The rule aid is not. So you can use the rule aid to offset your budget and if you don't get it next year, then you're gonna have a double deficit.
Which is a good idea to put it against the A C, right?
Right, so that's why it's good to use it for one time things. And so what we've been doing across the board in all the districts, and we've been doing it since COVID, is that. We've been using these E S R funds and other things to not use school choice, to not, and we've been building up kind of a safety fund on that. To take care of a lot of capital projects, um, you know. And some of those other funds have rules, you only can spend a certain amount of capital and certain kinds of things, but. So, but it is a lot of conversation about how to do those things, but. It's also good for you folks to kind of understand. The dangers of using it different ways because people are gonna start asking, you got that rule aid. Why is my tax dollar not going down? And to what level should it go down? And that's where, those are gonna be conversations this year. And at the same time, we'll keep an eye. Um, what's going on in the state house for next year's budget. You know, that's when we, when we talk to our state reps and such, we get to have the conversation. Are you going to level at least a little fund rule aid? If they guaranteed that, then we could drop, we could, we could. Or a percentage point right away, could be done just on rule aid, but they got a promise of that for the following year. Because a lot of schools didn't do that. And we're kind of saying this because you're gonna watch the budgets happen. A lot of schools around us, and I just know a few conversations. Used E S R money and used rule aid because they had to.
Right.
Their operating budget.
Right.
And now this year. E S R's gone or almost used up, you know, we have a little bit of use of that this year as well. Um, and those other schools, they're gonna do massive cuts, they're gonna somehow make up the difference or find another funding source. So, and right now, there's no funding source coming, so. And then the final thing my report said, well, two things. One is that the text collections for this fiscal quarter are low, are below expect, or for Massachusetts. So that's the early indicator that we're gonna have a tough fiscal year next year. Meaning our revenue, the state's revenue, not collecting as many, which taxes they predicted, so the revenue is going to be down.
Well, how's that with the millionaire tax and marijuana? Both of those things are supposed to help our schools. Oh, tell me how jobs are made.
So I think the millionaire's tax is partially how the universal free lunches is being funded, it's a totally.
That's correct, that's right.
Remember the millionaire's tax also goes to transportation. So they gotta split it between the two. So. The superintendents get, we met with the taxpayers association, which is a private. Group that keeps an eye, it's a watchdog about, of the Massachusetts, how Massachusetts is doing its, uh. Its budget and governance of that. And they kind of talked about it, said it's a mess. They don't know how, how they're supposed to use it, they don't know how they're supposed to divide it up. And so the fact that they're using it toward. The fact that the governor said that they're using a percentage of it toward it, she didn't indicate what percentage. Because they don't know how they're supposed to break it up. There's no, they passed a bill. Without those rules in place, and so now they gotta pass bills with those rules in place and you know that's a political mess. And so, and then if you listen to it, I can't go and repeat what they said because it's very complicated, but. The actual getting the money is also complicated because it's not clear. So. Anyway, so there's a lot more in, in, in motion there too, so it's not as.
Tax would be a tax, like my taxes I pay is very clear.
And then there's, and then they also, they're also very good about, you know, the fear of millionaires, um, getting around that tax. And they're actually talking about how that is happening and then. They said, they were honest about it, like, there's a debate.
They're billionaires.
Right, well, if you have two houses, you change your residence, right? So. But they also said, there's some different data around that, whether or not that actually happens or not. There was, you know, two people presenting had different opinions on that. One was strong that they will. They won't collect as much as you think they're gonna collect. Anyway, that also, um.
Well, but legalizing marijuana, certainly when it started in, uh, Colorado. You know, they put the money directly to. School budgets that they raised from the taxes and pot shops. And I thought that was what was gonna. Part of what also was supposed to happen with funding in. Because they're heavily taxed.
Yeah.
And that money was supposed to go to education. So I see a pot shop on every corner, including Deerfield now, so I'm like, where's the money? We should be asking, where's the money?
Don't know.
Well, it's similar. It was, now it's being used for education, but they pulled the other funds that were previously.
The thing is, they, they think it's a different thing, so it's kind of like what we were just. Right, so you talked about the millionaire's tax about, you know, transportation, what people aren't talking about is we put more and more electric cars on the road. Where do we get the majority? A lot of our taxation for transportation is the gas tax. So if we start selling less gas, we gotta find a different way to put revenues to our roads. So where is that gonna come from? And so, you know, they're talking about tolling systems and stuff, but they're gonna have to do a major change in how they fund the road system if they stop, if they take away the gas as the major. So I don't know, I don't know the statistics of that, but I just heard people talking about it, like, there are a lot of changes and there's no planning in that area.
Right.
You know, so. They're gonna put transponders in their car and they're gonna bill you per mile or something, you want, at least something like that.
Oh, gosh.
It's gonna be like riots coming out here because I said that. I beat that up, but, you know, they're gonna come up with something. And then the final thing is that, um, speaking of riots. Um, my contract is up this year. You guys have to January decide when I renew it. Which means there's probably gonna be a meeting or two between now and January to. The collective committees have to get together to decide whether or not they're renewing my contract. We hope we'll have that new agreement in place so that we can use that to kind of dictate how it works. Um, but you, my contract says you have to leave by, um, January.
Who schedules those meetings?
Frontier usually takes a lead on that.
Okay, alright.
You all be in a meeting like, what are we here for again?
Gotta make sure the meetings happen.
Where nobody comes.
Are you interested in contributing?
Yes, I will be sending a letter to.
You don't want to be superintendent of ambers or anything.
Don't worry now, don't worry.
Do we have to dismiss this meeting?
We do.
Okay.
Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Second, second. All right, all in favor? Thank you very much.